We will adjourn the Board of Education closed session and convene the regular Board of Education open session at 6:36. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Everyone is here. Mrs. Travanti is in Washington DC, coming through on Zoom, or whatever we're calling it today. Reporting out a closed session, the Board took unanimous action in agreeing that the superintendent through the evaluation process meets or exceeds all expectations, and she is our superintendent, and very happy to have her. Thank you very much, Paula.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Order of business. Is there anything that needs to be moved?
Yes, Mr. President, the district would like to pull action item number 3A and bring it back to at a later date. We are not, the CCA is not ready at this time. Action item 3A.
Any other changes?
No, sir.
Okay. Entertain a motion for the previous minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Passera, please call the roll.
Board member Ocon?
Yes.
Board member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
The next one is, we need to approve the minutes from a regular board meeting on August the 13th. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Ms. Passera, please call the roll. I have it twice. I thought we were going to take it as two different items.
We only have one set of minutes.
You had the one? I just have it printed twice here.
I do see it twice also.
Okay.
No way.
It's okay. We'll just resend it. I see it's a continuation. Yep. It's okay.
Okay.
Up next is board member reports, and I do not know, do we have board member reports?
Good evening, everybody. So, two quick comments. First off, I want to congratulate all of our student athletes who started their seasons last week and had an absolute blast with my son at the high school football game. For those that weren't able to attend, I highly recommend taking your family out to see our student athletes do amazing things. It was an absolute blast to see children outnumber adults and see them interact amongst themselves. It's truly heartwarming. Additionally, I would also like to apologize to those here in person and those watching at home for the pool concepts not being included in tonight's agenda. This was my intention. It was ultimately my intention for those items to be on tonight's agenda. Unfortunately, the final decision regarding the agenda was outside of my control, but I do plan on requesting them later this evening to be placed on our board meeting on September 10th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Board President. Because I have always maintained that we don't do business on social media, I'm going to read from the dais the statement that I made about the ICE raid that was in Monrovia on the 14th of August. "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere," Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "As an elected official and a voting American citizen, I issue this with the full weight of my office and my conscience. I unequivocally condemn the ICE raid targeting day laborers in the Home Depot parking lot in Monrovia on Thursday, August 14th. I also condemn all such raids taking place across the country when they are carried out indiscriminately, without transparency, and absent lawful justification. I am deeply saddened and profoundly distressed to know that during this operation, one man, Roberto Carlos Montoya Valdez, a devoted father and beloved grandfather, lost his life in a desperate attempt to flee. He died not in the commission of any crime, but because he feared for his safety. His death is a tragedy that should never have happened." These actions come amid ongoing legal constraints on ICE's conduct. A federal court has issued a temporary restraining order upheld by the Ninth Circuit prohibiting federal agents from conducting indiscriminate arrests or stops without reasonable suspicion, particularly based on race, language, location, or occupation, masking one's identity, deploying unmarked vehicles, and targeting individuals simply because they are waiting for work. These practices undermine the rule of law and violate constitutional protections. I will not be silent in the face of these injustices. I call upon my colleagues and fellow elected officials in the city, county, and state levels to take immediate action to prevent masked racially targeted ICE raids in our communities. We must acknowledge a fundamental truth: Reform does not happen in parking lots or car washes. These are not the places where justice or dignity is served. As a society advanced in human rights and compassion, we must find a better way. We must care for our fellow human beings with justice and humanity, not terror and division. My heart goes out to Mr. Valdez's family, to all who suffer under the shadow of fear, and to every member of our community living in anguish. We owe it to them and to our shared humanity to act." I want to follow my official statement up with great thanks and admiration for the work that our superintendent, Dr. Paula Hart Rotis, does along with her cabinet and with Dr. Jones, part of our staff in our cabinet, to ensure that all of our students have access to their right to an education, to a safe and free education. So, thank you so much for the work that you all do to make sure that our students are safe on our campuses, that they don't have to be afraid on our campuses, and thank you for the way that you communicate with all of the administration so that they know how to continue to keep all of our students safe in this regard. So, thank you very much for what you do in that regard. I also wanted to mention the oak tree again. Mr. Navas, would you, I don't want to put you on the spot, and if you don't feel comfortable, you don't have to, would you mind coming up to the podium for me for a moment? I made a lot of noise behind the scene about the timing of the removal of the oak tree, and not, I think, a week after it was removed for safety reasons, did we hear news from across the country of several people dying from diseased oak tree branches. So, I wanted to make some noise from the dais, and thanks to you for your action that legitimately could have saved someone's life. And so, I just wanted to bring you up here, look you in the eye, and tell you thank you for the work that you did. It clearly was necessary, and thank you.
I appreciate that. It was a difficult decision, but one that I felt comfortable with making for the safety of course, our staff and students and community. Again, I appreciate your words and the trust you put in us and, you know, our cabinet.
That ends my board report.
Mrs. Travanti, do you have a full report? Okay. We'll move on to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is back-to-school night season, and we've already had the pleasure of attending four different back-to-school nights. We've been to Canyon Oaks, to Mayflower, to Clifton, and just last night, we were at Wild Rose. And it is, as always, so wonderful to see the families and the children together. I think one of the most exciting things that we've seen, and my cabinet team members and our directors who've been at the sites with us, for me, has been neat to see, is how smoothly the sixth-grade teams have transitioned. It's like they were always there, quite honestly. It's been such a neat thing to watch, that they've had just a few months to integrate themselves into something that's totally new for us, and if you hadn't been around to know that this is something we cooked up just a year ago, you wouldn't know, because those teams have got it down, and they've got the plans and the rotations, and they've thought of everything. And just kudos to those teams at those sites, and I'm sure when I get to the other elementaries in the coming weeks that we'll see the same thing. I'm just really proud of that and all the things that they've thought of to make sure that our sixth graders have a really solid experience, and because we knew that the other kids were already getting a really solid experience. And it's just been a pleasure to get out and see the schools. We also have, as Mr. Gomez Tagle talked about, we had quite an exciting Friday Night Lights last week, and we were able to light up the V up on the hill. And I know Dr. Rainwater had fun running up the hill to make sure the light got turned from the M to the V, and he didn't want to jinx it, and it was very cute to watch him say, "When should I go? When should I go? When should I go?" And then he got to light it up for his first time, and it was a great win. A very exciting, it was part concert, part football game, a great win, and all of our sports teams are really doing well, and we appreciate that. As Mr. Gomez Tagle said, when the kids outnumber the adults at a sporting event at a high school, that's the best it can be. Looking forward as the year goes by to some of our other events, our music events, and our drama department events, and really more of those things. We also have our PATHS meeting coming up, and I forgot where, Brad Oaks, our next PATHS meeting is coming up at Brad Oaks. We are doing it a little bit, thank you, tomorrow, doing it a little bit differently this year. We are taking a tour of the district, and we are hosting them at different places around the district at each of the sites. We do have the final one of the year here at the district office, but it is our hope in bringing them out to the sites that more folks will be able to join us, and the first one is tomorrow night at Brad Oaks. So, we hope that you will be able to join us at our first PATHS meeting. Again, parent access to healing and support. With that, that is the end of my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Up next, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board on any matter that's on or off the agenda? Simply fill out a speaker card, and you shall be heard. Ms. Passera, do we have any comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes, I would like to call Karen DeCle to the podium.
Good evening, school board members, superintendent, is this on? Hart Rotis, members of the cabinet and community. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of MHS Aquatics. I was hoping to see pool designs options presented tonight. The contract signed back in March said that they were going to be ready three years, or three months ago. I continue to look forward to seeing that topic agendized and presented here in this transparent public forum. I am going to be out of town on September 10th. I will be watching online. I'm still hoping to see those pool design options. I'm just going to have to ask you all to imagine that I came up here and said something really witty and inspirational that just filled you with compulsory desire to bring a truly upgraded aquatic center to Monrovia. Use your imagination, whatever works. Just imagine I said that. But I mean, I am only one person here. Over the last six months, you've heard from 47 unique individuals who've come to this podium to ask for you to do everything in your power to bring an upgraded aquatic facility or a renovated aquatic facility back to Monrovia. They've ranged from kindergartners to senior citizens, because this does affect all of us. Our shared spaces and places like football games are what connect our schools to the broader community, and the memories we make there are what bring us together. So, this is so much more about just me being here and my own dogged efforts. I want to take a moment to talk about the facility needs assessment. As we know, that big beautiful binder, also available online, lists a number of improvements that are needed across our facilities. And while those facilities do have needs, the important thing to note is, none of those facilities in that binder is currently unusable, with the exception of an elevator. They are working. They need upgrades, but they're functioning. When the assessment was done, our pool was up and running. It didn't even make it into the binder because it wasn't a concern at the time. Things have changed, and we should be flexible. Today, our pool is in far worse shape than anything listed in that assessment. It's literally sitting there rotting and molding while we continue to decide what to do about it. I know you've been listening. I know I've said enough, and I don't even have to be here in my absence. Please remember that there is public, significant public support for seeing Measure MM money go as starter money for this aquatic center, their support for a long-term plan and design presented here for us to see. There is gratitude for that we're continuing aquatic sports at MHS in the meantime. And lastly, there is public support to see our school district and hope to see the city council working together on this with good-faced contributions and open discussions from both sides. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There are no further comments for items on the closed session agenda?
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak to the board on items on the agenda?
Yes, I would like to call back Karen DeCle to the podium, please.
Good evening again. I wanted to comment on the upcoming Measure MM draw tonight. I read through the slides pretty carefully last night, thank you, and I have some public comment. First, I am so happy to see updated bells, PA systems, and clocks being prioritized. In the light of the tragedy we had today, safety is obviously a top concern. The fact is, the number-one upgrade that will keep all of our students safe is a working PA system so that authorities can reach all students in the case of an emergency, not just those who happen to be in a classroom that works. I appreciate seeing that up there as priority number one. Secondly, I did want to say that I was really glad to see the slides explain, clarify exactly what our financial responsibility is when it comes to ADA compliance for our facility upgrades. I've been coming to a lot of meetings lately, and I've been hearing a lot about our ADA compliance requirements, and I haven't been totally clear on what's exactly required of us and when, but according to this presentation, it was now clear to me that what is required of us is a 20% budget of certain projects. And I really appreciate the foresight of our project management company that they've already factored in that 20% into the relevant projects. Now, the state requirements seem far more manageable to me, watching from the outside, because the upgrades are being tackled alongside the related construction projects. So, that makes a lot more sense now. You handle ADA improvements as part of the construction you're already doing, and you plan for that extra 20% from the start, so it's already budgeted in. Thank you. That's a logical, reasonable approach, and I fully get it now. I appreciate it. I was similarly gratified to see, right there on the second slide, additional funding sources listed alongside our Measure MM resources. It makes sense to use local funds and state revenues wherever possible, freeing up bond money for those projects that can't be funded elsewhere. On slide five, it looks like we're just under $10 million for those PA systems and bells, leaving us $24 million in currently available funds. That's kind of a fun number. Slide seven spells out clear phases of the planned projects. Our current phase came out at just around $19 million. Reading carefully and doing a little bit of math, I saw that we have some current funds available where we can be flexible with the allocation. I hope you'll all see that this is the perfect opportunity to look into an aquatic center. I already just spoke on my thoughts regarding the facilities needs assessment. Just as a reminder, I'm asking you to please use any flexible MM funds that can be found in this coming presentation to make the priority, the pool priority number one, and I ask that you let the other facilities that are currently operational just wait in line for their upgrades. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further public comments.
Anyone else wishing to address the board on any matter on or off the agenda? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to staff presentations. Dr. Jarrow?
Thank you, Board President Hammond, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Hart Rotis, fellow cabinet members, and members of the community. Tonight's presentation will provide information to assist the board in identifying next steps. This is based on questions and guidance that the board has provided in the past. In particular, the presentation addresses the following: the anticipated availability of funds over the next six years, estimates of potential facility funds for each school site, a summary of the projects identified by the board as priorities and their projected costs, and recommendations for a phased modernization project timeline. We'll also provide an update on the Brad Oaks building project, and then we, the team, will be awaiting the board's direction on determining modernization priorities, with the potential, we hope, of beginning projects in December of 2026. So, with that, I'll hand this over to our partners with Dixon and Associates, Joe and Jason.
Good evening, Board President Hammond, members of the board, Superintendent Paula Hart Rotis, cabinet, and the community members. As the speaker shared, she clearly has spent some time looking at the presentation. I would like to kind of draw your attention to a few of the slides as we kind of dive in. So, first and foremost, some of this is a little bit of review. We did provide some of this information back in June, but we tried to kind of clear it up a little bit and make it as clear as possible. You can see the proposed bond draw is about $21 million. You have some local funds available. This is as of pretty much last week, thanks to Dr. Jarrow and his staff, with the most updated numbers. The possible Prop II modernization eligibility, we dropped that down just a little bit to be very conservative, excuse me. That, when we brought it to you in June, we still believe that number is going to be upwards of $30 million, but just for budgeting sake and not getting too far ahead, we wanted to make sure it was a little more conservative. So, you could see potential availability upwards of $100 million coming sometime in the next week, as we wait the actual firm number from the firm CLC that was doing that work for us. So, as you can see, you do have an extensive amount of funding available, both through the bond and also through some local funds that are available. There are some challenges. Fund 25, for example, is a little bit more limited in what you can expend those funds on, as we've mentioned before, and then Fund 40 actually is a lot more open availability to use those funds. So, any questions on this slide?
I do. I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if I should...
Just do them as we go.
Do them as we go, or put them at the end. So, I appreciate you letting me have right now. So, Prop II is associated with what?
Prop II is the current proposition that was passed.
So, it's in and of itself?
Yes. So, that's, that was what we've asked CLC to provide, a general estimate as to what the district would be eligible for in modernization dollars, yes.
So, what happens, just to be clear for the public, I'm sure you know this one, but for the public's sake, is that schools, the state of California does not give money for updating schools, but what it does do over the period of time, because schools do deteriorate, Proposition II allowed for funding a certain number of times, and it's, I think it's over a 12-year period? Fifteen years?
25.
Okay. Okay.
And we're coming up on that 25 years.
And so, what happens is, for this money, is that some of our campuses are coming up on those timelines where we would get some remuneration from the state to upgrade that because of the number of years that had passed since the facilities went into service. That's what it's for. It's not the, it's not the benevolence of anybody.
It's not free money. It's not just the first very...
Right. And it's not every campus that's going to get it. Every campus will get it, but it's on a different cycle.
Correct.
So, my, I don't know if it's a question or a statement, but I'm really concerned about seeing words like possible, maybe, we hope, asterisk, et cetera, and having something that has those asterisks be in the computation, right? So, we're looking at, we're looking at a bottom number here of 89.9 million, right?
Correct.
Some of that is maybe money. No? Dr. Jarrow is behind you, shaking his head.
I'll let, I'll let Tim answer that.
But I see possible and potential, and that makes, that makes me concerned about how we look at the number and get a bottom number.
Yeah. You can't trust the state of California to give you the money.
Wait, really? Wait, really?
It's about a lie. So, when, when you apply, when CLC provides your eligibility, you turn in an application for that money, and you get in line. You also have to pass a resolution that says getting in line is not a guarantee of state funding. Therefore, we can't, we have to give you the asterisk and the possible. However, since 1998, when the state school facility program came into being, if you were in line, every district that's been in line and is eligible has received their funds. So, we have some confidence. But just to be careful, and we like to be careful, and you're going to have, you're going to see that resolution, you're going to have to approve that to apply for this funding. We just, we just have to wait and see.
And I appreciate you being conservative. I really, really do, and I understand 100% why you are. I am just, just for myself, having a difficult time putting the projects, prioritizing the projects, and making a decision on what we should, could, must, and will do when part of this money isn't even here, right? So, I just wanted to let you know and let the public know how I am thinking about this, because there are, a lot of things are conflated, and that makes it difficult to, to work with something that has an asterisk next to it. Completely understandable, but just that's, that's how I'm wrestling with some things.
For sure. You can't spend the money you don't have, right, ultimately. So, the intent is to give a picture of what could be, so that you could start that planning process, recognizing that those funds, once you get in line, as Joe mentioned, would come, you know, potentially two, three years down the line, right? So, you'd have a lot of time to make those adjustments to the rest of your projects as you kind of go along ultimately, right? So, but for planning purposes, it does give you a general idea of what you could be eligible for. We will have a firmer number, as I said, hopefully by the end of this week, that we'll definitely be sharing with you as soon as we get it, so that you can see. And I will update this slide deck and this, and data to send it out to you as well, so you can see. Again, it would be, it's an estimate, but it's still something that will be a little more accurate based on that information, so.
So, we have, we have the bond money.
Correct.
So, we have Fund 21 in hand. We have Fund 25, and we have Fund 40 in hand.
So, 34, a little over 34 million right now.
Okay.
That you have, once you sell the bonds.
Right. Right. When would 2 happen? If we, when would it be in hand?
Uh, well, once you go through the process of getting all of our ducks in a row, it would be probably roughly two to three years from that date.
I have a quick question for Fund 25. I understand that the limitation is those funds can only be applied to school sites that are experiencing a growth in enrollment. Is that correct? Or is it something else that I'm thinking of?
That is part of it. But there are also, you know, as you see enrollment shifts around the district, it's, you know, declining enrollment is facing every district. So, but developer fee still exists and are still expended. So you do have a lot of opportunity to expend those funds. Good examples, you know, TK expansion, a great example of an opportunity to expend funds out of that fund. You, there are ways that we would and could do that. We have to go through and just, and provide a report to the community around how you plan on expending those. So we would work with Dr. Jarrow to do that. As the board gives direction on what are the projects that you want to move forward with, then we would work with staff to determine what are the things that you need to bring back to the board and to the broader community around how you plan on expending those. There is a little bit more limitations on that fund, but we're, we feel pretty confident that a lot of the work that need to get, needs to get done would be part of, easily be part of that work. So.
Thank you, sir.
President Hammond, I have a question if I could.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Travanti. I did not see.
Yeah. No worries. I know I'm pretty small up on the screen. Going along the lines of Mr. O'Conne's question on Fund 25, this year, we're going to be going through the process of consolidating our middle schools. We do not know which campus that is going to be. But historically, through the years, dat, that we've looked at data, we tend to lose students when they go into middle school. We have enrollment loss there. We held sixth grade students back at elementary schools, so I'm not sure we really experienced a loss. But I do have concern that we will continue to lose students at the middle school level. What I'd like to see, and I would, what I would like the board to consider, is using, and seeing if we can, use Fund 25 funding to improve whichever middle school campus that is. There's a lot of work to be done on either of those campuses. And I think that if we can make that middle school the best that it can be, as far as fields, as far as the parking laws, new slurry, painting the school, you know, anything that is needed aesthetically, maybe looking at the restrooms and talking to the principal on what is needed at that middle school when we get to that point. But I would like to see us allocate some of Fund 25 for that purpose.
Yeah. And for, it can't be used for things that would be considered maintenance projects. Painting a building would be, would fall under that. There are some, some guidelines, but if the staff, if the direction to staff was to find as many ways to access that fund to do that work, we would work with staff to do that. Right? But there are certain things that are outside of the scope.
Okay.
You can't spend that money on. And a lot of that is maintenance related ultimately.
So then when did that fall under Fund 40?
It could fall under Fund 40, yes.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
But if I could, to your point, Madam Vice President, the, whichever campus does remain open, as we have discussed, does need to, to make sure that it is adequately suited to welcome all of the students from, from both middle schools so that, that it is the, the flagship, if you will, middle school
Right.
and being the remaining campus. And that it is welcoming and, and that it, that it is that shining star, as you said, so that
Yes.
that they want, we can retain all of those and hopefully draw even other students who might have chosen to go somewhere else.
Exactly. We're on the same page there. Thank you, Dr. Hart Rotis. Yeah, thanks.
The next one, again, this was shared previously. This was when, when we were looking at the total allocation of the bond and looking at the percent of need, these were the, the numbers that were identified per school site. Again, as Board Clerk Lockermeyer mentioned, this includes funding that you do not currently have, but could go into the process of planning. This is not set in stone by any stretch, obviously. But we were just simply looking at, from the bond allocation dollars, applying that forward in terms of the percentages of need and ending with potential site allocations that you could identify and see there. So those are all movable within that context. And that's not the board's purview. Obviously, this is just simply using the remaining 59 million in the bonding capacity to, to design a little bit more of a per-site.
So looking at the number for the high school, does that include any pool, football field, track, any type of athletics?
It would depend on the board direction.
Gotcha. So this dollar here, though, the 16 million, that is based on?
That was based on, what did you?
Needs assessment.
The needs assessment. So that, at the time, didn't have, I believe, the pool in there.
Gotcha.
But again, those were, as was mentioned, those are programs or things that were identified at the time, not necessarily required for you to do.
Sure.
The board has full discretion to determine where you want to allocate those funds.
If I may, to follow up on Mr. Gomez's tagline. So this allocation number in this slide that we're looking at right now does not include, does, does it or does it not include the developer fee and the percent of this that needs to go to ADA?
It does not. No. So you look at the 59, and then we just were applying the petition, the additional state money eligibility that you would have to show you what you potentially could have access to. We were asked by staff to provide an update on just general ADA accessibility estimates, PA and clock upgrades, some safety upgrades. That included asphalt repair, some of those things that were definite, indefinite need at some of the school sites. That's just one example. Access control, which is the, the doors and door hardware, and then fire alarm, which is another area that was asked of us. So you can see that the bottom line numbers there, they are very round numbers. Ultimately, some of it's going to be dependent on, for example, access control, what, what it actually looks like, what the plan and intent is at each school site. It could be less. It's currently at a rough order of about $7,000 a door. So if you have less doors, the number would come down depending on what it is of, is the interest of, of the board and staff moving forward. But those are, that's the rough number that we came to there. The ADA estimates, as you can see, does not include the district office, but it does include Mountain Park, Canyon Oaks. Again, recognizing there, there's some flexibility because of their location. You have some decisions to make, I believe, about just location of those programs moving forward as well. But you can see that just the ADA estimates based on the 2019 facilities needs assessment and what the architect feels there's, is an appropriate estimate is roughly 36 million. So however, when you apply, when we were looking at the 20%, we were looking, took the number from the previous slide of per-site allocation and applied that. And that would give you roughly 16 million that you would need to expend in order to meet that requirement from the state, from DSA. DSA only requires that you spend 20% of your funds on the project towards ADA access. So for example, Brad Oaks currently with a fire rebuild, we had to apply a 20% to that project. So 20% of the budget goes towards, is going to go towards ADA upgrades. So, so that's just, again, a rough number. Because if you decided to expend more at one school site, obviously, that number would go up at that school site and, and you wouldn't have it at others if you didn't have the pro, work there. We will have a better guide of ADA moving forward. I believe at the next meeting, we're bringing to the board a contract for the ADA transition planning, which will then allow the board to identify, okay, where are those projects and based off of actual transition planning services and a report from them. So questions on this slide?
I just have a request moving forward because, so the previous slide, potential, is potential funding available per site? So for example, looking at CELC with state funds, which I understand has a time element in it as well, is 1.4 million, just using that as an example. And then to continue the example with CELC, on this slide, we have ADA, DSA, recommendations of the PA, safety upgrades, access control, and fire alarm. But I don't have a total to that line. So the previous slide, I'm looking at an allocation of between 1 and 1.4. And then I have a recommendation with, with numbers associated with it. But I don't know how close to that 1.4 we are. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense. The ultimate question, I think, for the board is if you want us to move forward with the allocations as we presented them, because ultimately, that would be up to, to staff and the board to say, yes, these are the allocations we want you to move forward. Those were simply numbers that we provided based off the facilities needs assessment. So again, that's not set in stone. So, but I, I fully understand making sure that it backs into the numbers.
Right. So now I have to use my calculator.
I, I'll do that for you.
It's okay. I can do it.
Jason, if I could clarify. So on that previous slide where it's the percent of need, the, the allocations that are on that, those are, the percent of need is because that's what was in the big binder on the things that were tagged in there. So in that big binder, the, when the, the company went through and said, these are the things that have to get fixed, that's where that percentage of need came from.
Correct.
And so then that's how you applied the, where the, how much we think we should spend on each of those.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. I needed that clarification. I appreciate that.
Looking at the priorities area costs, as was said earlier today, the potential combining of the middle schools, would we, if we agree to this, are we able to not move forward on one of the sites? Do we have to move forward on both sites?
No, it's totally up to the board. In fact, when, during discussion, when you, there's a slide that will show kind of an example of, you know, moving forward, modernizations, it's, it is dependent on what it is that the board decides to do. I recognize there's discussions around the middle schools and what that might look like. In the process, we could design and then determine ultimately, we don't want to move forward with that school site and either reallocate that fund into another project or hold those funds for when you make that decision ultimately. This is what we want to do. So if you decided to bifurcate a school site, you may need to have two separate systems there instead of just one. So you might have a different approach there. So we'll, that will be the, fully dependent on the direction we receive from, from the board and from staff. But yes, you definitely can reallocate those funds as you see appropriate. It is simply a rough, rough estimate. We would recommend, moving forward, not to do a fire alarm and access control separate than the modernizations. Those could trigger DSA requirements, and then you would end up with a lot of A numbers out there, which are, could be really challenging. You'll have ADA access or ADA issues that you'd have to contend with just that small amount. And then as you do modernizations, you could have even more that you'd have to do. So our recommendation moving right now is to look at safety upgrades and PA bells and clocks, kind of move forward with those. But obviously, at the direction of where do we want to expend the funds of the school district, and that would be your decision to make.
Just a quick question. So if you took CELC, ran across those columns and added all those up, should it equal the number from the slide before?
No.
Okay. And the reason why?
I guess it's more.
These, oh yeah.
Yeah. Again, if you could just explain why this is going to be 2.5 versus the 1.4 on the slide before?
So for Canyon, for the Learning Center, those costs are rough order. You don't have enough currently allocated in your budget to cover the costs of, of these upgrades as it currently stands. So, yeah, that's, that is a challenge.
So there's $900,000 more in current than what we currently have budgeted?
For that school.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Just that school. The rest of them are not in the negative. But that also is a unique school site. We apply, the architects apply just a general number. I would expect that number to be less in terms of the safety upgrades. It's not a very large school site. The same for PAs, bells and clocks, because of the nature of the size. It probably would not rise to that level. But yes, there is the challenge of that percentage of need. But when we were working with the, the needs and direction from the board, it wasn't about the percentage of need from the facilities needs assessment. These were the priority projects the board had identified that
Right.
you wanted pricing on.
I'm just looking for the clarification because if you're doing the math, they, they don't add.
Of course.
Thank you.
So the recommendation in discussion with staff is to move forward, as I stated with the PA clocks. Obviously, as member Tagle recognizes, we might have to adjust depending on direction of, of the board related to certain schools and things that might be happening, the additional safety upgrades. And then that comes up to a total cost of 9.5 million. The remaining funds, because you currently have about 34 million available, would be just over 24, almost 25 million available to begin modernization planning at potentially three school sites that you could then phase throughout the projects. So that would then trigger, as you were going through those processes, you could then do your ADA upgrades, the fire alarm, and the access control in the, the budgeted for, budgets for those school sites as you're moving forward. So as Dr. Jarrow mentioned, if we went in and hired architects to start this planning now, we could very well be into construction projects by June of this next year.
So the remaining funds from 34 million, that 34.3 million, that's just the bond, right? No, that's the bond
That's bond and your local funds. Correct.
and the local funds. So that 24.8 does not include Prop 2 money?
Correct.
So that's all in-hand money?
Correct.
Or will be in-hand when we, when we do the draw?
Correct. I can show you an example. So if you think about Plymouth, again, we use the allocation with state funds. We could back that out if that was the board's wish so that it was not the number with the additional Prop 2 dollars applied. We could simply go back to the facility needs assessment from 2019 and apply that as the number and work from left to right. Essentially, architect fees are about 10% of your total project costs. The ADA upgrades required by DSA would be 20% of your project cost. So at Plymouth, with the state funds in, but if you wished, we could pull that out, obviously, that would, those numbers would all drop accordingly. With the 10% contingency, that gives you about $7 million if you use the Prop 2 identified number. But if you wanted to be, for conservative speaking, if it was, no, let's just go to the 2019, that would all adjust down a little bit. The number wouldn't be as much available for site upgrades as the budget would not be as big. So these are just examples of essentially what you could move forward with in modernization. But again, just trying to give a picture of what it would ultimately start to look like from a budgeting perspective.
Mrs. Travanti, do you have a question? Okay. I wanted to make sure. It is really hard to see you. You're about an inch
I appreciate you asking.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
Any else have a question? Okay. Thank you. Keep going. Okay, thank you, keep going.
So as mentioned, right now, you have funding that would be available. Less some architect fees, that number could adjust down according to how the board, you know, what the board direction is related to. What number to use at each school site for budgeting purposes? You could start your modernization phase ones with the money you'll get from the bond current funds. You do have a bond sale in 2028, which will be money that you're going to get for sure, right? And you could then complete some of that phase one, assuming you went with a larger number amount. If not, because the 2.7, as you can see, that's remaining. You don't have enough money to cover everything that you would expend. So you'd have to finish out your phase one, but that's assuming higher dollar amounts and that assumes those are the schools you were going with, right? Which were high dollar schools. The high school is a very expensive school. It has a lot of, obviously, it's the largest school you have, so the expenses are going to be higher there. And then Plymouth was your second most expensive school. That was identified with in terms of need, right? So there's a lot of need at Plymouth. And Monrovia, we use those two as the example, they were the biggest amounts that you have. Then, as you kind of wrap those up, you start to phase two modernization, identify a couple more schools. You would have about 14.8 million there. And then you have this the state funds coming in. Now, how you budget for that, that's the ultimate question, right? So at some point, you would have the influx hopefully of state funds between 28 and 30. And you would then continue on through your bond process and accessing those dollars to then continue to build out the rest of the phases in your process. This is just a hypothetical, put it together so you could kind of see a phased approach to the modernization.
This brings up a very interesting concept. If it's what the future looks like. Because while 2030 is literally around the corner. There is a very real chance that the people who will be behind these chairs will not be the people that you see sitting here today. Yet the vision for 2030 will be set by the people who are currently here. At 2028 and 2030, the people with a different vision could alter what a board put into place. It's very possible.
For sure, for sure.
Because the funds are at the discretion of then the elected body.
Correct.
I want to make that real clear to the public, that it changes. The only constant is there will be a Monrovia Unified School District. The people that occupy the chairs constantly changing. So while we may have a clear vision of what we think is the right future. May not. Be what the future looks like.
So again, just gives you a general picture of of potentially how to phase projects. And and to see a little bit of the cash flow. Recognizing again, you're you're talking about dollars that you don't necessarily have in hand. You can use those for planning purposes if that was the direction of the board. If the board didn't feel comfortable with that, obviously, that could be adjusted. But our recommendation and talking with staff was to look at it from a phase approach versus trying to do one project like. Simply, let's do all of the fire alarms at all the school sites. That triggers D S A for everything. And then you're potentially going to have some some challenges there. Instead, do it through the modernization process so that you're capturing all of at the same time. So the planning that's happening at the school site is is comprehensive. That being said, recognizing 100% that you have challenges. Every school site, as I mentioned before, when I walked it, bells do not work at all the schools, the P A systems. There are definite needs that can be done and those don't have to go through D S A. Those can be done locally and that's why we're bringing contract forward to the board staff. We'll be doing that at the next board meeting to bring somebody on to help design that and get that going ASAP. Because that's a huge priority, recognize.
For the board and for the edification of the public when they're watching these meetings, if you would please have on the presentation of those. What is D S A oversight and what is not? Because it will help guide the process for what can be expedited and. I don't know that you would want to make a decision purely on the fact that D S A was going to be getting involved. Especially when it is a health and safety issue. So it's you're going to have to bite the bullet on that thing sooner or later. Sometimes you got to bite that bullet.
For sure.
We're not going to, we're we won't be able to ignore it, so.
No, for for sure. And you have right now, across your district. You have challenges with some of your fire alarm systems, but they're functioning. Right, but you do not have you have bells and speakers that are not at all functioning in certain rooms. So that we recognize and I think the board recognized that right off the bat that that is a huge priority that needs to be addressed. And we want to help get that addressed this year with for you all, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on before I just gave you general updates on projects?
I'm looking to see if Marissa. Marissa, he gave me a thumbs up. Are you good?
No, sorry, that was no, I'm good.
Thank you.
So I have a comment and I will have some some subsequent questions. But I want to let you know I'm not being obstreperous. I appreciate you and the work that you're doing. I just have some confusion and I also have some ways. That I expect to be seeing things which might not be right. But I'm trying to navigate this. For me, it would be easier to say, we need to address these things. The bells, the clocks, the keys, the. Ramps, the rails, the bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And it's going to cost this much money. It seems to be, we're not doing that, right? So now we're just saying. Every site should have this chunk of money. From this draw. And you should modernize. Things at that site. Is that the way that we're proceeding? Currently? Except for the P A systems, et cetera, because that has been identified as an absolute need.
Right. I'll let Joe give it a shot.
So that as Jason explained and the board knows, the clocks and P A systems need to be done right away. So we want to get that done with with your staff as soon as possible. So we want to bring in a designer contract at the next board meeting, take care of that. We're recommending that we in in consultation with the superintendent and staff. That the board approves modernization in a staggered fashion. So look at three sites first and we put three sites in here as a sample, but those might be the three you want to go for. Because they have the highest need. But only spend a certain amount of money there. To upgrade those schools, not because we don't have the state funding. But we'll be in line for the state funding by doing those three schools. And it's it'd be a lot easier if we tried to do something at every school and we went through this in several meetings. It really impacts your ability to provide programs. If you have every school under some type of construction. We have OSHA requirements, we have other requirements, it'd be really difficult to do, so. We're recommending that we stagger it and then. When we bring on the architects, we can really get into the design and the budget and what items need to be done. And we usually do that with consultation with the school site and the stakeholders at the school. So we'll hold meetings at the school site and talk about with the with the principal, the custodian and site councils and folks like that. What do we what do we need to see? We'll we'll have the infrastructure things that here's here's what we have to do. And we'll bring back, as Mr. Hammond asked for the, you know, what what's going to be required by D S A. We'll bring in a presentation on that too. Because we're going to have to meet with the sites and say, here's what you have to have. You're going to have to have a fire alarm, you're going to have to have the roof fixed, you're going to have to have certain things done. Here's how much it's going to cost. Here's how much money we have after that and here's what we can do with that and get their input. But go over it with the school sites. So they all know what's going on, so that's that would be our approach.
Mr. Dixon, I just want to have a, were you using the roof as an example, not as something that we have to do?
Not the roof.
We've spent a boatload of money.
The roof is.
Okay, so to use it like we need to get to the roof, we fixed all the roofs, folks, we've used that money, okay? Thank you.
I'm sorry, you have, you have, and we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to use that money that you spent already as our match for the state money too. So we're we're in, we're in pretty good shape. You've spent about, I think the last time I was here was 16 million that we could use towards our state match, so that's that's good. But you know, those those high, those high priority infrastructure things that folks don't see or know about, they have to be taken care of. The whole, the concept of modernization from the state and Mr. Hammond brought up the timeframes before is. To have the school last for another 25 years. The whole idea of modernization is put in the right infrastructure, you know, fix the utilities, fix the HVAC. Repair all the high value assets, roofs, you already done. Building envelope and have the school last another 25 years. That's that's the purpose of state modernization.
So I have a question for you, Dr. Hart wrote us. If we move forward eventually with three sites. How are you feeling about? The ability to? Make everyone feel that their needs will be addressed and that there's, you know, that we're not leaving anybody behind or passing anyone, any site. I don't mean anyone, any site over, do you understand my question?
Yes, absolutely.
If we just choose three out of 10 sites. How are we mitigating the feelings behind that?
Absolutely, and and there's always going to be feelings of why are we in, where are we in our place in line? And having been at a district where we went through this over 10 years, four different cycles of modernization. That part of it is driven by the needs assessment by the big binder and what? What needs to get fixed first? And then where we can leverage in that cycle of moving through the modernization phases. And working with not only the Dixon team but with Mr. novice teams about making smart choices about what three sites we pick. And how it's going to have the smallest impact on the regular operations of the district as a whole as our year moves forward. We just had our our monthly team huddle this morning. We talked about how everybody else in the world thinks that it's summertime and this building did, no, summer, kick our feet up. No, that's our eight weeks of burn it, burn it, move it so everybody can have their year. And so talking about how what we're doing and how what sites we pick and what projects we're doing at each of the sites. Can have the minimal impact on the operations of everything as a whole. What I think in terms of addressing, how do people feel like, why are we last or why are we fourth? Or why didn't we get to be in the first three? Is about the transparency and the communication within within the messaging here. That what we share with our community, what we share at the school sites, the work with our our team. And as we go out to look at, okay, what has the board decided in terms of this giant list of things that is going to get put in as as Joe shared with us? Here's the list of things we absolutely have to do and now there's this little slice that's left over. What are we going to get to do at the site that that get is part of it? And that's where that community input from the site principal, having sat in hundreds of hours of those meetings as a site principal and administrator. Of, you know, well, we can do this upgrade in the cafeteria or we we can have this other shade structure outside. Or we could do these other pieces that's going to make a nice part of your media center. Having the that. The site staff and the the community of the schools be involved in those pieces is how that that gets conveyed. And that they get to be part of those that and that they see the involvement. But really, the binder and the the have to do part drives that and then the communication from our office. Or our building. Did that answer your question and it was very long winded, I'm sorry.
I think one way to be able to quickly show the community in our schools is as we prioritize this, we'll put a date, a calendar date to it. So that we could see alarms. P A systems, 2025, 2026. And then as we move it out into the future, then it's wherever your work is, you'll see it on a calendar and then you'll know it's coming. It's one of the easiest ways I can think, it's a very visual, very quick way of finding out that you are on the list of things to get done and when it's going to be.
Dr. Hart wrote us if I can.
Yes, Mr. Gomez Tagli.
At what point are we going to actually announce to the community the direction of our middle schools? And I ask that because I see two middle schools on all of these slides as they rightfully should be. But that is something that that we do need to decide on and move forward with so that some of these numbers can start moving. In a more equitable way.
Sure, that that's a great question and I haven't yet shared any of this with the community. I've I've shared with the board, the and the staff. The the leadership, we have a tentative timeline, very much like last year with the phase one of the fiscal stabilization plan. Our goal was to have the decisions for the first portion to be made by the December meeting and that is our goal this year. To have the second half. Of the decision for the consolidation be made by the December meeting. So we are looking to have our community information sessions begin in September and October. Which will include in person sessions, virtual sessions, surveys, all the same similar things that we did last year. Meeting with the staffs at at both sites. And then presentations to the board along the way as we just as we did last year. Ed code, oh, now I'm going to forget the number, but ed code requires for consolidating at a school. That you, the board here at one meeting, our recommendation, what your choice is. And you have to wait until the very next meeting or a subsequent meeting, it can be two meetings later. But you can't decide at the same meeting, you have to wait until at least the next meeting before you render your decision. Because you have to be able to state at the meeting where you make your decision, how you incorporated the public input in your decision. So the goal is for us to have our meetings in September, October with the community and collect through various survey and input methods. That community feedback, be able to present to you at November meeting. And then let you ruminate and decide and present, have you present your decision at the December meeting. And that was very informal, community, I apologize, but he put me on the spot.
Would that mean that? Neither middle school would be one of the recommended three? To start with? Since we're.
That's a Joe and Jason question.
Direction on September 10th. And we wouldn't have come to the decision about either of the middle schools at that point, right? And does that that follows, right?
Yeah, it's totally up to you and I think one of the questions early on was, you know, could, I think, Rita made a comment about. Spending some of those funds that are available locally to make some adjustments to the middle school, whatever middle school, whatever happens ultimately, right? If you decide to consolidate whichever one you go to. We could withhold back one of the school sites, it could be, we could say, we're going to do a middle school, it'll be determined in December. All that does is push back your construction for that particular school site ultimately, right? Because you could, you know, it would just the we could expedite planning, but recognize that you might not be able to get into doing a lot of D S A project work, pharmacy structure work in the summer if it was delayed a little bit. But that being said, you know, depending on what it is and how quickly we move, you never know. The D S A is an interesting animal. That sometimes things come out faster than than you expect, sometimes they take longer and it is somewhat. And it is somewhat dependent on the scope of the work as well. So, um, we, I, my recommendation, if the intent is to have a middle school on the list of one of the three is simply identify the two other schools that the board wants us to move forward with. Identify the budgets that you want us to work from, withhold the middle school till you make that decision. And as soon as you make that decision, we, you know, have an architect ready to go and, and bring an architect on and start that process in, in January. So, um, that would be a recommendation I would make because ultimately, again, you, you may want to make some adjustments and, and expand or change some of the, uh, funding. You may say, well, we're going to do this to this school. Let's take the funding that was going to be allocated there and move it over to the other school simply because we want to enhance it even more so, right? So makes total sense.
And that was precisely why I asked that question early on because I knew there's a process that we have to go through before we can make a decision on closing one of the middle schools. And I want to make sure that we have ample time to be able to make some of these improvements before the new school year starts. So whatever fund that comes from, that, that's, that was the intention of my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one more recommendation with Measure MM. The board put together an ad hoc committee that meets with Mr. Dixon's staff and everything. It is critical that those meetings are held once a month and are in fact attended to once a month. Because it's the board's eyes in the lead up to this. And I want to make sure that we have that opportunity to have those meetings.
We even met in July.
I think we missed August. Unless you're going to have one between now and Saturday. I think we missed August.
We did, we, we did, but we met July.
Just real briefly, uh, just to give you some general updates and the community general updates. Brad Oaks is currently, uh, back in DSA Plan Check second time, uh, which is, uh, just the process. You go through initial phase. They gave you comments. Architect has responded. We're hoping that they come, um, come back to us, uh, hopefully stamped and ready to go sometime after the, the September 10th board meeting. And that's why we're bringing forward, uh, the contractor for board approval. So that as soon as those stamp plans come back, the contractor can start. And that means start planning, start doing all the work that needs to get done, um, right away. So that's what we would start once the contract is approved by the board. Working with the contractor, working with school site staff to determine what's the length of time, where are we looking to do the construction in, in particular? There are some ADA upgrades that need to be done in the front of the school. Uh, so we want to talk about timing, um, and what the impact would be. But our primary focus, um, in hearing from staff is let's get that building done. So, uh, we have asked contractor to, um, build a plan to get it done so that, uh, post, um, the two week break and winter break, that we could hopefully be in the building. Um, that is the goal. Um, and that's, uh, that is our hope. And then looking at the ADA access, um, you know, depending on, uh, time and, um, what the decision is around impacting the front of the school because it definitely will impact that drop off lane. So we're mindful of that. ADA transition plan, uh, that'll be coming, um, that, uh, we received proposal for that. That's coming to the board for your consideration at the next board meeting. And then, uh, to bring on somebody to begin our process of identifying, uh, bells, PA clocks and also access control at the same time. Whether that gets done in the scope of the initial work when we do bells, PAs and clocks up to staff and the board. But using the design services now because they're all very similar in process. So, so that is a lot going on, a lot coming towards, uh, to you guys at the next meeting. So. Any other questions for us?
Thank you, gentlemen, very, very much. We, we, I know this is a lot of work. Okay? It'll be even more fun once we have a project underway that you guys can be talking about the updates of the project. This is all the preliminary, get to the shovel part. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Questions.
You guys want to take a five minute break? Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we'll take a, a five minute break. And when we return, um, Mrs. Travanti will not be with us. And thank you for being a participant in this part here. Okay, we're back in. Thank you very much. Up next is the consent calendar. Uh, up next is a consent calendar. Um, is there anything to be pulled from consent? Nope. Entertain a motion for consent, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mrs. Passerri, please call the roll.
Board member Ocon?
Yes.
Board member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Oops.
Yes. Board president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much. On to action items. First up is Dr. Zamoripa and a facility use agreement with the Duarte Fitness Center.
Thank you, Board President Hammond. The Board of Education is requested to ratify a facility use agreement with the city of Duarte effective, uh, from August 13th, 2025 to August 22nd, 2025. The purpose of this facility use agreement is to allow the Monrovia High School Boys Water Polo Team to practice and meet in the Duarte Fitness Center pool.
Questions?
I just wanted to go ahead and ask a question that I'm, I already know the answer to, but just for the edification of the public. Where's the contract for the girls' water polo? Or other aquatic sports?
Those, those are upcoming, right? So in the fall, we have, uh, this, water, uh, boys and then winter girls and then, uh, spring, uh, swimming.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
One, one last question following the same train of thought. Why is this contract only from the 13th to the 22nd?
Great question. Thank you. So this is, this is, um, our, our friendly neighbors in Duarte working with us to close the gap between, um, the YMCA and then Citrus College.
Thank you. Mine's a comment. I'd like to thank our staff for working to make sure that following the board's wishes and making sure that we keep our aquatics programs working and making and getting the facilities for them to be able to participate. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Passerri, please call the roll.
Board member Ocon?
Yes.
Board member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Up next is Dr. Giraud and a resolution authorizing inter-fund transfers.
Thank you, Board President Hammond. The Board of Education is requested to adopt Resolution 2526-02, authorizing the necessary inter-fund transfer of cash from general funds, Fund One, to the Enterprise Fund, Fund 63, for the 2425 fiscal year. This resolution authorizes the transfer from general funds to Enterprise Fund for the 2425 fiscal year as outlined in the adopted budget. Inter-fund transfers are a standard financial practice to ensure funds are available where needed to support programs, operations and obligations.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. I'm over here. I have separated my papers and I'm, I'm completely lost right this second. I thank you. Uh, motion and a second. Uh, please call the roll.
Board member Ocon?
Yes.
Board member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
So we're pulling the next one. Yep. Here it is. That's what I did. I moved it. We have pulled item 3A and we're now on to item 3B and Dr. Land is fine.
Thank you, President Hammond. The Board of Education is requested to approve the memorandum of understanding with the California School Employees Association and its Monrovia Chapter 20 to reclassify the compensatory education technician position to education fiscal compliance analyst. This MOU outlines the reclassification of the compensatory education technician to fiscal compliance analyst due to expanded responsibilities. If approved, the current employee in the position will be automatically reclassified and their seniority is preserved after reclassification.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Passerri, please call the roll.
Board member Ocon?
Yes.
Board member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board president Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Up next is a public hearing for the initial proposals for negotiations. Dr. Land is fine.
Thank you, Board President. Just, uh, note that the next three items will, will sound very similar. They have a purpose though. They have to be, uh, taken separately. First one, the Board of Education is requested to hold a public hearing to allow public comments regarding the Sunshine Negotiation Proposal for the joint initial proposal topics for modification of the current MTA District Collective Bargaining Agreement. The governing board of the Monrovia School District will conduct a public hearing on the Sunshine Proposal outlining the proposed changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the Monrovia Unified School District and the Monrovia Unified Teachers Association for the 2526 school year in accordance with Education Code 3547. Monrovia Teachers Association reserves the right to create, add and to delete from and amend and modify its proposals and open articles of contract. amend, and modify its proposals and open articles of contract during the negotiation process.
So this is a public hearing. Have we received any comments?
Can we open the public hearing at?
Right. So we'll open public hearing at 8:07, and do we have any public comments?
There are none.
Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public comment at 8:08. Then we'll take up the initial proposal for negotiations from the MTA, item number D.
Thank you. The Board of Education is requested to adopt the initial proposals for negotiations between the Monrovia Teachers Association, MTA, and the Monrovia Unified School District for the 2526 school year. Monrovia Teachers Association submits the topics they wish to negotiate fulfilling the requirements of the sunshine provisions of the Educational Employment Relations Act, California Code, Section 3540, and initiating reopening bargaining with the collective bargaining agreement between the Monrovia Teachers Association and the Monrovia Unified School District.
This is also a public hearing? I didn't see that.
No, I think this is an item you have to approve.
Thank you. And then I think we take up Item E.
We do need to vote.
I think this is a voting item.
We do need to vote on it.
You do, oh, you do need a vote.
They are, I can read both items, and you could take them together. They are the opposite sides of the coin. They're the district's proposal and MTA's proposal. The wording is just different. So shall I read the next one as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So D and E will be taken as one.
That's correct. So the next one is the initial district proposal. The Board of Education is also requested to adopt the district's initial proposals for negotiations from the Monrovia Unified School District to the Monrovia Teachers Association for the 2526 school year. According to Government Code, Section 3547, the Monrovia Unified School District hereby sunshines or submits the following initial proposals for negotiations to the Monrovia Teachers Association. The district interests and principles include furthering educational opportunities for our students, compliance with legal mandates, maintaining a financially responsible budget, the continued retention and recruitment of quality staff, and maintaining a collaborative relationship with MTA. The district looks forward to a collaborative negotiation process with MTA for the 2526 school year.
Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to make it clear in the motion that it's the motion to approve D and E together.
Got it. Mrs. Passeri, will you please call the roll?
Board Member Ocon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez Tagle?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Hammond?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
And Ms. Passeri, I know you knew that. I just wanted to clarify for the public. Thank you.
Next meeting will be here in these chambers on September the 10th at 6:30. A regular board meeting will be on September the 24th and one on October the 8th. We are now in new business, and Mr. Gomez Tagle, would you like to?
Yes, I would like to formally request that little architect be present at next board meeting to present those pool concepts that the public has been so patiently waiting for.
Thank you. Dr. Jarrow, I believe that has already been arranged.
Yep, we'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Monrovia PAS meeting will be on Thursday, August the 28th at 6:00 p.m. Labor Day, all of our school sites will be closed, and wish everybody a very safe weekend coming up. Back-to-school nights are as listed, and we will have no further public comments, and if there's no further business before this body, we will stand adjourned at 8:12.